We're stuck in.
This is a public hearing, correct?
Yes, we'll start out with a public hearing. All right, the purpose of the meeting, and it's a public hearing, proposed local law two, twenty twenty-two, the local law to override the tax levy limit established in General municipal law three C. So we will hear comments for or against at this time. Basically, what this allows us to do is to go over the state two percent tax cap. I don't foresee us doing that. This is the first year in my three years, two years of interim as a town supervisor that this year we're looking to make sure that we have this law in place. They haven't in the last three years. Yeah. Is it definite at this time that we will? I have to check with a couple of things on some projects that we have going on and some funds I'd like to move from one account to another. And I need to know ahead of time whether or not that is going to affect our town budget. With the inflation and everything else that's going on, there are several towns that I did talk to. There's two others that give us, we've talked to several, but there's two other ones that are doing the same thing just to make sure because of that inflation and everything else that's going on that they stay within the budget. Like I say, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to go over it. So with that, if you have any more questions for us, or more than we'll.
Supervisor effect, you just throw in that. A lot of towns pass this annually, like when they do their regular resolutions at the beginning of the year. And most of the times they don't exceed their two percent tax cap.
Just in case.
Right.
And that's, like I said, there's a couple of things I got to check out on my end with some capital improvement projects and things of that nature, whether they go into budget or won't go into budget or affect the two percent tax cap. But I've talked about a couple of other towns, like I said, they are going to do it. And I said a couple that are right next to us. There were a few that didn't answer me back.
Can this resolution be passed after a tentative budget has been drawn up?
The problem is we have to do it within a time like fashion, so if we don't do it ahead of time, then we're not going to make the statute of when it has to be passed. We couldn't do it late, in other words. I guess to answer your question, no. If we don't do it now, it's going to be too late in the year to do it later.
Are these projects that you have to examine fully funded at the beginning of the year and info within the budget amounts allotted?
The laws we have right now is a tentative budget, okay? So we'll be working on the budget over the next.
The projects that you're going to review?
The projects I'm going to review, right now we have quite a bit of money in an unallocated general fund, unallocated fund. And we have a couple of projects that, one would be like the garage would came in like at two hundred, three thousand when we put it out the bid last year. We're expecting to come in at sixty-seven thousand. We're looking at adding some extra money to paving next year so we can get more paving done. Because the CHIPS money really hasn't came off, the state and federal fund of CHIPS money. And or you can ask Mike for what he gets for pavement for, you know, that amount of money. It's not a lot.
Not to interrupt Kevin, but not to interrupt on that, but that's highway budget. It's got really nothing to do with this. We're talking about general fund tax cap. So the highway issue, that's a total different budget.
I understand that highway is its own budget. Highway still falls within the town budget, okay? It is its own budget, but it is within this town budget, okay, Reggie? And also, like I said, that, that project is something that we had thrown around here on the table over the last year. I know Mike Parati had even asked about spending more money on, on paving of the roads to try to catch some of it up. There, there's a couple of projects we could look at as far as what we're going to do on upper money too, that we could use some of that unallocated funders of money to, to offset. Again, this is done tentatively, not with the intent for us to go hogball and just forget about the two percent tax cap. We're going to do everything, and I will tell you that myself, we're going to do everything within the state within that two percent tax cap. But I again need to know that in the instance that we go over that two percent tax cap, that we're not going to be in trouble. You know what I'm saying? Because we still got to get a budget passed.
No, I mean, I understand what you're saying. I just think that the way that process is set up, it makes it very easy to go over it when you get to pass a resolution prior to even a tentative budget being put in place and the public being made aware of it. And you've never seen me at a town meeting or a public meeting because I have very much good faith in this board. But when I saw that, and I don't read the paper anymore, and I happen to have a copy of the paper. I put it in my calendar, so it does concern me, the inflation rates, insurance rates. I mean, the cost of asphalt certainly isn't going to go down anytime soon. And yes, it's a separate budget, but why increase something? You, you put a budget in, you pave what you can until the money runs out.
Right. And, and the other thing is that, I mean, hopefully when I took over, we had about nine hundred ninety-eight thousand in the unallocated fund reserve. We're creeping up on three man, okay? So those monies are normally used for capital improvement projects or, you know, purchases of our equipment or whatever we got. And I know that Mr. Snyder's looking at a couple of new pieces of equipment out there also. Last year, we did go over the two percent tax cap. But I had to dance around for about four days after I gave Mike an extra fifty thousand dollars. I should say, I mean, this board gave Mike an extra fifty thousand dollars to help with his large equipment fund to get the equipment up to where he believed it should be up there because some of it's quite old.
Yes, it is.
And we ended up lowering the general tax down to thirty-seven cents. I mean, I'm sure you've been here as long as I have, that you can remember when the general fund was dollar ninety-seven, two seventeen, a thousand. It's at thirty-seven cents a thousand. And we're lucky that we have, you know, an offset from the landfill that we utilize to incorporate into that budget to keep the taxes as low as we can. Second lowest tax.
Nope, you've all been doing a great job. I have no complaint.
But I am a little nervous on not going forward with some of the capital improvement projects and allowing that fund to get to Chuhai. Because you'd much rather have that in your bank account than ours down here in our bank account. But the reason that we had it in the unallocated fund reserve is so that we could take care of projects and still have some money in there for emergency fund in case we had irine or sandy or things of that nature that came up. But it really doesn't need to be where it is right now. So now is an opportune time for us to use some of those funds to actually put in, back into the community and get some.
Especially if it's infrastructure.
Yeah, and that's what we're looking for.
Absolutely. Yeah. Okay.
I hope that answers your question, but my intent is to try to keep, as we've did the last three years, to keep this to the two percent.
Okay.
And that's a question I was going to ask Mr. McCormick later, and the comptroller said the things. Because I've heard two different things now on the capital improvement projects. One, they don't go into the two percent or don't incorporate into the two percent. And another one that said they do, only school districts don't, don't have to include their capital fund projects, so. Any, any event, it would give us a lot more latitude.
Okay.
Last meeting, did you say something about if you move money from the unallocated over into, that that might trigger it if it went over the budget, even though it's not more money out of the taxpayer's pocket?
Right, well, that was in regard to the capital improvement projects. It's my understanding, it was my understanding, that in order to do that, if, at the time, and like I said, I just got some word that it may not go that way. But in order to utilize that money that's in the unallocated fund reserve and do the capital improvement projects that we're talking about, and there's more. And we'll have to identify them, you know what I mean? And let the public know what they are. But, because those are just a couple. But again, not looking to take and raise your taxes and looking to utilize the money that we have in the unallocated fund reserve to do some of these capital improvement projects. And to get that fund back down to, you know, point five, you know, or some money on there.
But the money's there for the town to use. It doesn't seem like that should count against the two percent. Because it's already there. It's not like you're taking it from the taxpayer.
And, and mother of a misinterpretation on my end because when we gave Mike the extra fifty thousand last year, I, I had asked if we take the fifty thousand out, out of the unallocated fund balance and add it over, does it still put us over the tax cap? And there's four different figures that go into staying under that tax cap. And they said, yeah, we don't care if you already got it or not. You're still increasing your town's budget over the two percent tax cap. So that's why we ended up lowering the general fund tax down to thirty-seven cents to get us under that two percent tax cap. So there's, and it's not like we can just do it here. You have to plug the numbers in. It goes to the New York State Comptroller's website. And then after whatever it takes, the computer to split it back out, it'll finally give it back to us. It took four days to keep on in there to these numbers until we got it to balance and to stay under the two percent.
What would happen if we do go over the two percent? Is the state going to have a penalty or something?
You know, to my knowledge, as long as we have the local law in effect allowing us to go over the two percent tax cap, I don't know of any penalties unless you were aware of any penalties from the state level. I'm not aware of that.
There is if we don't, there is if you don't pass it.
What's that?
There is if you don't pass it, right?
Oh, yeah. If you go over, what Mike's question was if we don't pass a local law to go over the two percent tax cap and we went over it, we would be penalized. This, this is kind of part, part of home rule for each town or each, I shouldn't say each town because the school districts is different entities. But this is a way for them, if they feel that they, they may not stay within that two percent tax cap. It is subject to permissive referendum, just like a public hearing, I should say, permissive referendum, but a public hearing so that you guys can, you know, ask those questions so that we can be put in the spot to answer them. I don't mind answering them to the best of my ability, but, but that's, that's basically what we're doing. And yes, there would be penalties if they didn't do it and we went over or weren't able to stay within the two percent tax cap.
Did you miss one? No, I have a question on something later. Thank you.
Any other board member wants to make any statement or do you want to ask any other board? I don't have to do all the talking. You're welcome to speak to any board member here.
Kevin, how much do you think this is going to go over the two percent? You must have some kind of ideas on the projects you want to complete and stuff like that. So what are you talking about? How much do you plan on removing from that, that fund?
Okay, well, that, that will be up to the board, but I can tell you that fifty thousand, like I said, I can only tell you what I know. But I can tell you fifty thousand extra to the highway last year put us over that two percent tax cap. And I'm going to guess that if we use the, I don't know what they're going to come in at. We're going to rebid. That's the reason we didn't accept the bid on the garage floor. Last time, we only had one company that bid that job. And I didn't feel, and the rest of the board did not feel that that was a, we had nothing to compare it to because we only got the one bid. So we're hoping that when we rebid it out this year, probably somewhere around February or March because that, that way you get it in before all these big companies start, you know, accepting bids. And once, once you get probably into June, I know, I tried it this year, you're done. All those, those companies that could perform that work, the construction outfits that are large enough to do it, have already got their jobs lined up over the year. So we're going to rebid that in February. I'd love to have a crystal ball and say, this is what it's going to be. And hopefully it's no more than what it was, you know, last year when we did it. But I will guarantee you that if, if indeed that goes into the budget, that's going to put us over the two percent.
Yeah, because I've talked to many people and they're all concerned, you know, with the inflation so high, everywhere from a gas pump to checkout counters at the grocery stores. They're having a hard time making it now and they're afraid of more tax increases.
Yeah, and we just approved a new contract for the guys up at the highway garage. That's again, an increase to our budget. There are things that I want to make sure that are covered either way. My intention, you know, Mr. Donahue, is to stay as close as we can or not stay under the two percent tax cap. But I also got to be real listening and say, if you don't, we're going to be in trouble. You know, it's like Mr. McCormick says, a lot of towns do this every year and people just don't even worry about it because they do that every year. You know what I mean? It's, it's a milestone for me in my life I'm here because Mr. Potiker used to do it just in case, like Mike said. I never felt that I had a reason or, I guess that's pretty much a reason to do it. But this year, like I said, there are a couple of things that I have to do check out on, on the project or whether or not that will affect it. And again, I want to make sure that if, if we do go over that two percent, it doesn't matter how much, it could be barely over it, that we have something in play here that allows us to do that. But I will guarantee you, this board will work to its best to stay underneath it.
Yeah, because we have an article in the Outer Circle about many municipalities pulling this now to do what they need to do. And this article seemed to find it a very poor practice to do what you guys want to do with the tax cap. It's a very good article. Maybe I could print it up for you and let you read it or if you want to go on the site and read it or something. It explains it pretty well if anybody else wants to see it, what the process is and the reasoning for it and stuff like that. I think anybody that wants to read it should. Maybe I'll even see if I can share it over to Facebook or YouTube to be read.
And I could see where some towns may just say, hey, if I get this done and nobody shows up and nobody complains about it, well, let's just do whatever we want to do.
Yeah.
I can, I can speak for me, I think I could speak for the, the members I know on this board, that we're not looking to raise the taxes any more than are necessary to run the town and keep the same services. And as you know, with eight and nine percent inflation going on with all the services, our supplies and everything else that's going on. That's why I think that you'll see a couple more towns join in this year that normally don't, including us, to make sure that we're not penalized as a municipality if we find that it is over. And again, it's not my intention to, to just willy-nilly go crazy with this. I mean, like I said, the, the capital improvement projects, we'll, we'll definitely discuss them and make sure everybody knows what's going on. I don't think anybody will complain too much about, you know, getting more roads paved and getting those kind of things taken care of. And that is in Mike's budget if we do that that way.
Yeah. Well, I find, actually, I think the town roads are in pretty good shape, so to speak. I don't really see any real bad roads.
I'll let Mike speak to that, but I know he said there's several roads that he doesn't. I'll let you talk because I know when we talked, we were trying to, we had three different plans going on. What roads we, we had to discuss were the majority, in the majority of our eyes, what were the more necessity at the time, not that you felt that, didn't feel they all needed to be taken care of.
Yeah. Well, thanks. Thanks a lot.
Yeah, I, I think you guys are doing good and the roads are in good shape and stuff. I'm sure there's roads I don't travel that need attention and stuff. But on the whole, I think it's, they're in pretty good shape.
And they are. They are. It's just that we need, it'd be in better shape if I could get, you know, new loader, road widener, stuff like that, a little more paving.
And that's another thing.
My God, they'd really be, they'd look a lot better.
Does having the lack of that piece of machinery result in use of shared services? And there's only so much time that the other towns can provide?
Correct. Correct. Yeah, it's, 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 it's pretty terrible, really, the shared services, you know, to be honest. They have what, you know, they're, you know, they're short men, you know, and they have, they have a lot of projects too.
Yes.
They do the best they could, they can to help us.
I think he's trying to pass like that, is the town approval that let you borrow their?
Yeah.
But they were like, we need a back, we need a back.
Oh, yeah, that was a wicked lesson.
He's feeling like he's begging and borrowing all the time.
Yeah.
Is there, is it allowable under a budget to do a joint purchase between municipalities?
Yeah, matter of fact, I think Peru and Sable are doing a joint purchase if I'm not mistaken.
It's Blackwood, Peru and Sable.
We've done that too, so.
The paper. But that comes in with issues too, like Mike still hasn't paid anything this year.
Well, we've been bringing that up.
He, he's waiting on a machine plus he's waiting for the extra men to do it. So, you know, it's, it's very nice to share those costs and that's the way the state would like to see it done is, you know, share costs between municipalities or private partners if it's available. But there's some things that we, you know, he feels he still needs to do. And I don't want to make this all about Mike's budget. This is not all about Mike's budget. I just don't want him to be the downfall. I'm not trying to make him the downfall. That was only one instance.
I was just curious.
To answer both of your questions, it's not, I'm not putting this on him. This is, like I said, just to make sure that we have the ability to, again, make sure we have a budget that works and that if it doesn't hit the two percent, then we have an ability to say, okay, we're still good with it. If we don't do this, we don't. And then we just start cutting, you know what I mean? And I'm hoping that everything will go pretty good. I mean, the, the budget, I don't think is overly, what we've talked about and discussed so far has been over what we've been doing in prior years. There's always some salary increases. There's always some cost of material increases. Everybody always wants, you know, I don't want to make it about him, but equipment and stuff. There's stuff that we want.
Have you guys?
I can tell you down here, just at the office, I'm sick to death of dealing with my printer. Because, you know, my printer from my computer is black and white. It's not color. When I get color formats from engineers and stuff like that from the state, she's laughing because I'm like, hey, can you, if I send this to you, can you print it out for yours? And, you know, it doesn't, it's not a scanner. So I run to Mary's office to use a scanner and then send it back to my computer. I've been doing that for three years. You know, I mean, it's probably about a four or five hundred dollar piece of equipment. But it's, it's time that we update some of the stuff that's down there that's really needing to, you know. Most computer stuff is three or four years or, if you talk to the techie guys before it comes out in the market, it's absolutely, but you know, I mean, right after a four or five years is pretty much.
Well, has the board met yet to discuss line by line the budget here to see if anything can be trimmed or cut or?
No, we'll be doing that, Mr. Donahue, on the third, and if it goes into it, we'll go into the fourth. But that's when we'll actually break down, start looking at stuff line by line. Each one of us will have an opportunity to speak on it. You've been hit with those, so that's basically when it is, the third, and if needed, the fourth. Then hopefully that's, I'm not saying it will be. If not, we'll have to make another.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Anybody else have any more questions? Did we answer all your questions? So I guess that'll bring us to.
Motion to adjourn.
Any comment? Motion to adjourn by Mr. Newton.
Second it?
I'll second it.
Don't favor?
Aye.
I do appreciate everyone here coming down tonight and.
Excellent questions.
I guess we'll call the regular monthly meeting to order. We'll forego the pledge and we'll ask a roll call on the regular monthly meeting.
Mr. Newton?
Here.
Mr. Parati?
Here.
Mr. Bruno?
Here.
Mr. Facto?
Here.
Mr. Randall?
Here.
All right, minutes. All board members have been provided with a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. A motion will be entertained to approve and accept the minutes of the regular meeting of August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, provided that there are no additions, violations, or corrections. Could I get a motion?
Motion. Sir.
Mr. Parati seconded, and Mr. Newton.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes.
All right, address these. We have none tonight. All right, communications and petitions. I did get a few communications. We have no guest speakers tonight. Before we address these. Charter of communication is as normal, as gave me another one. I would like to introduce myself as Charter of Move Point Contact, Government Affairs. Please feel free to reach out to me for any MAG related spectrum, whether that is constituent related issues, cable franchise agreement, or any products or services. Sam Parker is our new municipal for charter communication. We do have a tower, excuse me, a tire roundup that we are going to be doing in the Tamaskaw Falls. Mr. Hager was very instrumental and actually is the one that I worked with to set this up. The dumpster thing went pretty good for the town on like cleanup from Casellas when they did that. I'm hoping this goes as well. So basically, the date is Thursday, October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, this year. The time will be from one P M. until four P M. Town, it's going to be at the Tamaskaw Falls Garage, that five ninety-nine Mason Street, Morrisonville. And it's open to Clinton County residents, you know, all over town. There, there's no charge, all right? The hours of operation, like I told you, is between one P M. and four P M. Registration is required. You need to call. And there's quite a few of these up. I know it's on the website already, our town website. There's quite a few flyers here that were made up by Sheila and placed at the front of the op, the inculp. But I'll give you the number. It's five one eight, five six one, four six one six, extension number three. And they're asking that you please sign up between nine A M. and two P M. right up until the day before. Space is limited, so naturally, once they feel they fill the truck, that's going to be them. Maximum amount of tires is ten per person. They got per vehicle, but basically per household. And tires must be hole tires, no rims can be on them, no excessive dirt or mud or water, only passenger car or passenger truck, no semi-heavy truck tractor tire, ATV, et cetera. Must be less than nineteen point five inches. So those are some of it. But if you need a copy of one of these, there should be some at the office and this whole thing is on the town website, so to raise awareness.
Quick question, and if you don't know, I'll find out myself. Hole tires, does that mean that you can't bring in blown tires?
Run that by me again.
The hole, when they call hole tires?
Hole tires.
Hole tires. If you have a blown tire?
I don't think if it's got a hole in it, they care, if that's what you're asking. I think what they're saying is that they don't.
It's just a tire. You know, I imagine it could be shredded, you know?
They're saying hole, hole tires. So I would guess that that means like, I don't know if you, I don't know if you cut it in half. Maybe the person that they're selling these to or who's taking them, you know, re-tread them or whatever. But that might be a good question, what they mean by that. I didn't think to ask them that, because it does say hole tires. I know it says no rims. So if you got something on a rim, they have to be taken off the rim before it comes.
I've got a tire that the tread is still attached, but it's not on the tire.
So it'd be two pieces?
Oh, like a re-tread came off almost?
But it didn't, it didn't come off. It's still on the tire, but it's not.
I really didn't, I don't see why that wouldn't be okay.
Yeah, it's still a whole tire. It's there.
It's still one piece, you know?
I'll find out tomorrow.
A question on it, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Are you looking for?
Are you looking for volunteers to work that day down there?
Well, he said, Mr. Hager said he would take all volunteers that he could. I plan on being there that day.
Okay, I plan on volunteering as well.
Right, yep. He said any, uh, as well as if somebody can be there from National Highway Department because it's going to be at your place. I think he spoke to you about that already, and before he put this out here that he'd have it here.
I have several people who have like ten tires, and I just happen to have a truck and I have like ten tires I want to get rid of. So I might be showing up with many tires, but they'll all be approved prior, you know, to that.
Through the registration.
Right. They'll take care of, they will.
Yeah, because some people will have a way to get ten tires.
I know, that's, that's the thing.
I mean, they don't give you, to my knowledge, any number or anything, because the guys on us, we had four that were in my garage. Yeah, I, I thought, well, maybe if they don't have a bad tire, I could use those because we changed the tires out and they weren't really bad, bad yet, but.
There are a lot of people out there.
Sitting there for four years.
Have ten tires, but they have no way of getting on them per vehicle there.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's the point.
Yeah, right. The only thing I would say is, is this is maximum of ten tires per vehicle, so just, you know, when you call them.
Yes, I see what you mean.
You see what I'm saying?
Okay.
Let them know that.
I'd have to make sure they're registered first before.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't say, right, it says per vehicle.
Per vehicle.
Maximum ten fires per vehicle.
Let them know and see what they say. I don't think.
You might have to pull in with ten and go get ten more.
Right.
We only got three hours. Nah, I don't think they'd be that crazy. I don't want to speak for them, but now just let them know ahead of time, that you might have a couple.
I'll keep a list of who they are, make sure they're registered, that's all.
Yeah.
That's it, right there.
Yep, that's what I would do.
Okay, it's all.
You have any?
No.
All right, moving on, did we kill a lot of them? I've taken advantage of it, there's more than I'm gonna go to. Um, you're invited to the Clinton County Landfill Open House. Uh, the Clinton County Landfill is, should say Casellas, is uh, going to be Saturday, October fifteenth, ten A M to two P M, at the Clinton County Landfill. Uh, sponsored by Casella. Uh, they'll have tours there, there's going to be some informational booths, uh, looks like they're going to have free um, lunch. Um, a bouncy house for kids, I'm gonna take it. Prescription drug take back day, so if you have any prescription drugs that you need to dispose of, I can let you do it. You're laughing on that one.
The bounty house one.
Yep. Uh, yeah, no, yeah, good clarification. But uh, again, if you have those medications that you no longer need, or some that, you know, somebody's passed away, for all sort of years, and you're trying to get rid of them, um, and we're not supposed to force them down the toilets, so. Down the sanitary stuff, so that's a good way to get rid of it, is up here, and give away some prizes for all ages. So again, that's Saturday, October fifteenth, at ten A M to two P M. Um, this is a pretty lengthy letter. Uh, I'll try to get to the nuts and bolts of this. In Clinton County and the office of the House, uh, the Office of Emergency Services and Animal Control Response Team, O C A R T, has been assigned and working to be prepared for such emergencies in your county or town. Plans are in place, volunteers have been trained, and we are now at the stage where potential sheltering sites for animals need to be identified and reached out to for agreements in case of an emergency. Um, usually this happens with like natural disasters, uh, like flooding in areas and stuff like that. I know um, some of our emergency response team, even in our local fire department here in Morrisonville, have responded to these areas. And we take care, we always seem to take care of the, the people naturally. Um, sometimes it's very hard to take care of the animals because they don't have enough cages, uh, sheltering and places to put these animals. So what they're basically asking for is if anybody is willing, or if anybody here at the town level knows of a good um, area that they could utilize in a case of an emergency to shelter animals. Naturally, uh, usually the American Red Cross is involved with that, and um, usually it's the S P C A that's involved pretty heavily with that, like K G. I know we even have spare cages at the fire station for animals, you know, uh, when that happens. So if you're interested, if you've got a area that you could house animals in, you know, a barn or a large garage or whatever, and you're willing to do this, just let one of us know here, okay? Um, receive this, this is basically the councilman, um, P F O A S, okay, P F O. This is a, what they're calling this is through uh, N R W A, um, New York Rural Water Association, we are part of that. And basically what they're looking at is a cost recovery program. Um, it looks like it's going to be like a class action lawsuit that they're asking us to get involved with. Um, I did contact this number, I got no response back. And I'm gonna have Mr. McCormick take a look at this like I did on another one that you remember a couple of years back.
Yeah.
Um, and just have you take a look. I just, this one is from New York Rural Water Association, which we are members of, for all three districts. So this one might be a little bit more legit, I might want to say. So I'm gonna have you uh, take a look at this and then give me some feedback, um, whether you think this is, you know, something we should look into or, or look at. I think I gave each one of you guys a copy of this in your boxes, if I remember. I can give you this, or while I do this, I'll scan this in.
I got it.
I did, I can't remember if I gave you one. I did write the name right on top of that, so if you, uh, that's, that's because I do so many different things, I can't remember what I did. But better than I thought it was. But yeah, once you take a look at that, you don't have to do that tonight, naturally. But when you get a chance to look this over and kind of give us some guidance on what you think we should do with that, or whether we should be a part of it. Because we do have those issues in our town. Okay, this is um, something that we discussed a couple of years back, um. It says, hello, I hope this email finds you well. My name is Rebecca Mietzsch, and I am the government public sector executive for T-Mobile, covering all New York. We have teamed up with Apple and bringing you these exciting offers. Please see below for pricing available today. Current promotions for nonprofits and municipalities, schools, libraries, responder, and department. Uh, below offers are not for personal plans. So basically what this does is it gives us government um, pricing on uh, cell phones. So I know we have discussed it one time, I know I'm on my cell phone down here constantly. I use my own cell phone for everything. Uh, there are times where it's not advantageous to use your own cell phone for work, because if there are photos are taken, like I have in the past, or certain things that have happened on, you know, mostly alongside the road, or, or things that we're looking at, um, a couple of the grants, they wanted me to take a bunch of photos of the road, where the water lines would be and all that stuff. Um, if anything ever happened and it went to court, naturally, all my stuff would be on my phone, and they could subpoena the phone and tie it up forever. So um, that's something, again, I don't want to look at saying we're going to do it tonight, but I wanted to give you all a copy of that, look at it. Tell me what your thoughts are, if you're still interested in uh, phones, and if we are, how many, you know, and for what departments, or for what people. Um, basically, the, the basic uh, model is uh, government unlimited voice, text, and data. And I can't see where we would need anything more than that, and it's uh, twenty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents a month. So they're not heavily expensive, but I just wanted to make sure that I gave you guys that correspondence, and that's something we can discuss. Let's see what you want to go. Yeah, excuse me, or I just got it. Um, let me see, I got it. Tuesday, September twentieth, I got it. It may be or it may not be in there. If it's not on the copy, for all, you can put it in the boxes. If you're interested, if not, all files, well, you can put it in the thirteen circle, you know what I mean? But yeah, I know we had discussed it in the past, and then it just, we never really pursued it, but now that they're offering it to us as a municipality, under government rates, it might be well worth looking into.
Quick question, going back on one, this Bob Roll Beer, is this the Bob Roll Beer from our town on the cart member?
That's a good question.
I don't have any of them.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. But um, you would like one of us to attend this tomorrow.
Okay.
So if you, nobody's available, I'll probably go there and just feed you back what I, what I've learned. But it may be, I'm not sure. I'll know more tomorrow, if nobody else wants to go. Well, you want to go with me?
We'll see. Let me check to see what we've got going on.
Check with the boss, I know.
You got it.
Yeah. All right, so the other correspondent I got was from um, Mr. Snyder. He's looking for a replacement of the old, I think that was an old ambulance, wasn't it? They're using for a trailer right now?
Nineteen eighty-eight.
It's uh, in pretty tough shape. He is not looking to buy another ambulance. He's getting out of the emergency business. Um, he's looking at buying a seven by fourteen trailer. So he's got, um, I'm gonna guess this guy gave a stake pricing on this? Um, if not, we're gonna have to have three bids.
Okay.
Okay.
There's another place I know of, Keysville, the third one I don't know for sure of.
If he goes off of uh, municipal or Schwartzwell, if he's a member on that, we could actually do it through him only. But if he's not affiliated with any of those things, then um, we definitely need three. He's not, if you know. Okay. So it looks like you'll need to come back with at least a couple of bids, so I can go back and forth.
Do you have another place in mind, like, well, in New York? Actually, like I say, I know there's.
There's, there's.
There's one down there.
Yeah, there's Rocks Down, there's Big E up in West Shaysie.
There in West Shaysie.
Yep, and there's Lucky's in Vermont, and.
What's the one out in uh, Keysville, do they?
That's uh, Rocks.
That's Rocks.
How about the one that we bought the dump trailer from in Bronson?
Yep, that's another one, um.
We got to get with Sam.
They actually do the lowest.
Yep.
Then, and then they're, they stick the uh, all the others. I'll ask Sam mine out, if you can't remember. But I'll check those Sam ones out, so just so you're aware, you will need at least three. And then uh, once we get all the bids, we can look at them and. So I don't think it's on, on my part, I don't think it's on a reasonable, but you're dealing with a.
Well, we get rid of a hole, you know, Mr. Friday and I talked about it last year, we get rid of a hole motor vehicle, you don't even have to worry about.
Well, chambers and ball joints and everything else that's going on with eighty-eight, and this thing should serve you for probably twenty years, I would think.
Yeah, oh sure.
Uh, the other thing that Mr. Snyder would like to see, and we've been discussing this for a while, um, my understanding, and why don't we let you do that, Mike, because this is your correspondence and you're right here tonight, rather than me speaking for you. Um, why don't you explain the front end loader and the hydraulics, and then how all the equipment is now attachments, rather than having its own motorized piece of equipment like it was years ago, and why you feel this is not needed?
Well, you know, it's um.
Do you need a copy of this to look at, or did you bring one?
Not really, no, I didn't, I uh.
You want it all, I mean, this is yours.
I uh, I kind of remember anyway.
Yeah, I'm sure, you wrote it, so.
Yeah. Um, yeah, you know, it's, it'd be just, it's, it'd be a yearly, I mean, not that we don't use a loader all year long anyway, but the attachments and accessories with a quick connect on the front of this machine is phenomenal. A loader by itself is just phenomenal. But um, with all the quick connects, you know, you can get rid of the bucket today, and you can put a, as you, as you buy the accessories, you know, like a road widener. Um, you put that on in the middle of the day and go out and start, you know, putting shoulder material on, roads that need, you know, that are, you know, deep drop offs. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's just a phenomenal machine, you know, with all quick connects, and like I said, then of course, having the accessories.
Does that seem the way most highway departments are going?
Yes, oh yes.
Disconnect quick connects, and rather than buying a separate vehicle for each.
Right, yeah, yeah, because you used to have to be all separate vehicle, you know? Exactly.
So I know we've been throwing this around for a while, I've looked at some new stuff I've showed you and online, and um, looks like you're willing to give us uh, some money towards the old one. Very unlikely, wouldn't be adding another one in that three deer fleet, you'd still want to keep the two, basically, or is it?
Well, no, the older, the older one, it's, it's, it's time for that one to go, that's a nineteen ninety.
That's what I'm saying, you'd be, according to this paperwork I seen, you'd be trading that in.
Correct.
And they'd give you a trading price?
Yes.
I don't want to say because if I have to go out for more bid, I don't want to.
Well, it shouldn't happen, because that's a source wall bid.
Yep. But you never know, I've been caught out there before, throwing those numbers out, and then you're like, ah, unfair to this guy, you know?
And they're, they're more than willing to come and present everything here at any meeting, any work session, whenever, you know, for the information for, for everybody. Uh, and he even informed me that um, the town of Champlain up here north, uh, they have one. I haven't had a chance to go out there and get some good pictures and a good look at it, but it's a, you know, it's a, it's a bigger machine, a little more horsepower. Um, but it's just, it's just the uh, the idea of I'll have an all quick connect. You know, it's phenomenal, all in one machine.
You save pretty much some money out of your large equipment fund. You have a revolving, you know, capital reserve fund, so to speak, uh, for a large equipment already. You have some money in there. You save some because you bought a used plow truck.
Right.
Um, so what I would say was, you know, within a couple of short months here, you're going to get that added back into, because it's going to be end of this fiscal year. So that's going to go into that account, and plus you're going to have uh, that new budget if you wait till after January. So.
Well, this, well, that's another thing, availability of it, it's a very good possibility for February of next year. Of course, the longer you wait, you know what I mean, like anything else.
Right, so if we're looking at next February and we got it lined up by then, uh, all I'm saying is you would have a little bit more money, more of a little bit more money in your large equipment fund, because you'd be on another, a whole new budget calendar year.
Another year, yeah.
And you didn't spend everything that you, you had this year looking forward.
I think I inquired about how long the price was good for, that he quoted, that he quoted. And I think they're gonna honor it for, for a while, you know, because of, you know, the way the world is today, you know? Instead of just being a thirty day, you know, you know?
So if he quoted, it's probably around February to get it, that would definitely be in the next year's.
Uh, you may want to double check on that, Mike, because the.
Yeah.
Created was fifteenth of September, and expiration is twenty-second of September.
Right, right. I, 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 I did, I, I did call him on that.
Okay.
And he did say that he'd honor.
Of course, that was verbal, verbal, you know?
So, um, it might be worthwhile to say, hey, can you put this in writing until February when you, I mean, if you can't get the machine until, I understand he wants you to commit to it and design a deadline, even if you can't deliver. But normally, what we do is we don't pay until we have the piece of equipment.
Well, there was a very optional lease program too. I mean, that's five years. Um, that would make it a lot simpler, but, I mean, because these machines, I mean, let's face it, we got that nineteen ninety-six, you know? When I first got here, we had a nineteen seventy, you know, and that thing lasted forever, but they were out, you know?
So that's something I guess we should throw around and weigh out, whether it's worth, uh, you know.
Yeah, a few more questions.
The only problem with leasing is you never own it, and you're continually always going to have a payment. So that's something.
Up until the last year, and then you, there's something like a. Up until the last year and then you, there's something like, you just give them a dollar and then, then you're done. It's yours. It's, it's on the, it's written on the lease.
What do you think is a better deal, the lease or the buy?
Well, I would like to see the buy, like, you know, cuz then we're done.
Is it a lease to own then?
As, as.
Cuz usually when you lease equipment.
I understand.
It's nowhere near what it would cost to buy the thing. That's, that's the advantage. If you can't buy, you know, something that's more expensive that.
Yeah, and then at the end of the lease, you end up.
Lease it and then at the end of the lease, you can always have the option to buy, but you're, you're gonna have to.
I'm pretty positive it's the lease, the, you know, the lease.
I'll, I'll look into it.
It's, it's written, it's on there. I thought it was kind of amazing, kind of tricky too, you know, like at the end.
Well, I guess we, we got some homework to do here on this. You got anything else you wanna add to this or?
Um, no.
You need it, right?
Correct. Yeah, it'd be the best start for a lot of things.
So, well, good time for everybody to look through that and then we'll discuss it. Okay, that brings us to the end of communications. Monthly report. Can we get, everybody seen a monthly report? So, can we get a motion to file?
Motion to file reports.
Second.
Alright, by Mr. Newton and by Mr. Bruno.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. Receipts. Town clerk, $728. Morrisonville Water, $71.50. Woods Mills Water, $141.39. August, Justice Barber, $654. Justice Van Ortway, $2,594. Cash receipts, $18,222.97. That's Charter of Communications franchise fees. $201, Music in the Park on eight twelve, 2022. That's food sales. Well, we're doing Music in the Park. That all goes back into that same venue. One, $123.78, Music in the Park on eight twenty-seven to twenty-two, which will go back into that same venue. So, the, the selling the food there, doesn't pay for the whole band, but it does contribute back into making sure that it's viable. $4,400 preservation on Leagues of New York.